It is 10 o'clock and the Kerrville City Council is in session for a special called meeting. Let me note some things that I think are important for us to understand. And I'm going to read these because there are several things in this unusual time that we're in of how we're going to proceed. Despite the COVID-19 pandemic and emergency situation we're all dealing with, we are thankful that we have had a way for the public to remain engaged and participate in open public council meetings in various ways. By the way, all of the council members have their masks, but we are in a distanced room with staff and council and one guest and have chosen not to wear them during the meeting. With the gradual reopening of Texas and Kerrville, we are again modifying the format for meetings and how the public can participate. Council meetings are now open to the public in limited numbers to allow for appropriate social distancing, so the public may sign up to speak for a posted agenda item. Anyone wishing to speak must sign up with the city secretary before the item is called up for consideration. For those who are uncomfortable with attending, given the COVID-19 pandemic, sending in written comments like this morning before 9:45 and at council meetings before 5:45 p.m. remains an option. Written comments will be read into the record by staff. All of these instructions are provided online and in the agenda. Any questions that citizens and visitors might have may not be responded to until after public comments have concluded and if a member of the council raises the question. Finally, we are still omitting any nonessential items from the agenda like announcements, public forum, and items for future agendas. Instead, citizens and the public are always welcome to contact the city via our website, city app, email, and phone to make comment or questions on any subject. We ask for your patience regarding any difficulties that might arise as we move with this new format on a temporary basis. And now for action for this session, I'm going to ask the city secretary, Ms. McElhanan, to read in Resolution Number 10, 2020.
Resolution Number 10, 2020, a resolution requesting that the state of Texas take action to suspend the 2020 appraisals of taxable property and to use the value established for the previous year.
So Mayor, Council, at your last meeting, you asked for an item to be brought back to you in consideration of what was happening at KerrCAD with appraisals, especially given the value study or valuation study that was performed by the state for the school district to make sure that our market values were reflected in our appraised values. And the results of that study came back with some pretty significant increases. And also considering that the appraisals were done in January and the pandemic hit after that, I know many of you are fully aware of what's happened with property values since then. So we have brought back a resolution for your consideration to send to the state, asking for them to use values from the last appraisals, not including new values. That kind of simplifies it, but that's essentially what it does. I want to first ask Mike if he wants to detail what this resolution actually does and then ask Amy to come up and present some of the data behind why this is a good idea.
Well, Mark, the city manager captured exactly what it does, and I'll just let Amy go through her presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Dozier?
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning. All right, we're going to go through a brief presentation on preliminary property values. All right. Okay, so as Mr. McDaniel mentioned, this is coming about right now because the Kerr Central Appraisal District is about to send out property valuation notices. And we actually received a preliminary tax roll from them last week on April 29th. It's at a very high level and there's a lot of things that aren't finalized yet, but we were able to get some basic information from that roll, and so we want to share that with you today. And just to recap kind of how this process works, which Mr. McDaniel also mentioned, so per state law, the Kerr Central Appraisal District determines property values every year and they're as of January 1st. So they are looking at values January 1st, 2020. Every two years, the Texas Comptroller's Office conducts a property value study to determine if the taxable value that the appraisal district is giving them is accurate to determine is that market value. And this is because of school district financing. So you may know this already, but school districts are primarily funded by two sources, local property taxes and then the state as well. And school districts with lower property tax values get more funding from the state. So it's in the state's interest to make sure that appraisal districts aren't keeping values, you know, unreasonably low, because then that would require more state funding for the school district. So that's the idea. So every two years, the state does this audit to make sure that all appraisal districts really are using fair market value. So there was just a property value study completed at the end of 2019 for the Kerr Central Appraisal District, and they showed understated values in several categories, including residential, qualified ag land, and commercial real property. And the summary results of that study is on the Comptroller's website, so anyone can look at that. It is a big deal for the school district because if it's not corrected, the school district's funding is penalized because they're using these abnormally low values. So that's kind of the root of, you know, what has caused some of the increases here. There's a lot of numbers up at the top here, and these are the numbers that were reported on the tax roll, the preliminary tax roll that we received last week. I did go ahead and put in numbers for the last three historical years as well, so you can see what kind of changes we've been experiencing. The way that the appraisal district works, they start with market value, so that's supposed to be, you know, what something would actually sell for. They take off an adjustment for something called productivity loss, and that's kind of relates to the income-producing ability of a property and its intended use, that kind of thing. It's a small adjustment, but they adjust for that to get to appraised value. Then from appraised value, homestead caps are taken out. And homestead caps are something that state law puts in place that says if you have a residence that you have declared to be your homestead, the value on that cannot increase by more than 10% in a single year, at least the taxable value of it. So it can increase, but your property taxes can't go up by more than 10% a year based on that assessed value. The exceptions would be if you, you know, if you added a new wing to your home or something like that, but if your property is the same as it was last year and it went up 20% in market value, you can only be taxed on it going up 10%. And then it gradually goes up to the market value over a period of years.
While you're on that line, rather than wait and go back, could you explain this 32 million in 2019, for instance? That is a big difference between 2018.
It is, it is.
And do you have an explanation for why?
Yeah, I have, I actually have a slide on it. So I'll get to the slide and show you a little bit more detail, but yes, looking, that line is the most surprising line to me as well, to be going along at 5 million, go to 32, and then go to 65. You know, those are really significant increases there. So yes, we are going to talk about that.
Along that line, I was going to wait too, and this is maybe for homeowners, such as myself, who did experience over a 10% increase last year. Does that factor into future? So let's say someone's home value went up 15% that could still go up again even though you're capped?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and skip ahead to my homestead cap slide here.
It's just going to be on my mind anyways.
All right, no, these are good questions, and, you know, and I think definitely homeowners, there are a lot of homeowners out there that will see this exact situation when they receive their property valuation from KerrCAD, which they're supposed to go out in the mail on May 11th, so starting next week, homeowners will be getting notices. So this graph here shows that homestead cap, you know, going from around 5 million up to 32, up to 65. Down at the bottom underneath the graph, you can see an example here. So in this example, we're assuming a 15% increase in the assessed value from each year, going from 2018 to 2019 to 2020. So in this example, a home would start out at $100,000, and it would go up 15% to $115,000, and then it would go up another 15% to $132,000. So that's on the assessed value side. The taxable value, however, cannot go up that much because it can only go up 10%. So the taxable value would go from 100 to 110,000, and then that difference between those two numbers, there'd be 5,000 that would go into that homestead cap category. Does that make sense? And then if you have another jump the next year, your taxable value can only go up 10% from the 110,000. So you could go from 110 to 121 on taxable value, but the difference at that point between assessed value and taxable value is now $11,000. So you can see the significant increase in that homestead cap number. And so that appears to be what's happening this year, you know, from going to the 32 to the 65 million. It looks like we are going to have two years of significant increases where, you know, both years are going to be capped by that 10% increase, and we're just having more and more value going into the homestead cap category. So that's value that can't be taxed.
So be catching up 10% each year.
Yes, correct. Yeah, so it could take definitely a period of years. If home values went down next year, you know, then we'd expect to see a significant drop in that number.
Ms. Dozier, I'm not a mathematician or statistician, but this looks like an impossible property values odds are are not going to go down significantly. And so if this trend continues, we'll never catch up. Is that correct?
Well, we've had, just since, I know since I've been here, we, 6% was considered a good year if it went up 6%. And normally we're seeing much less than that.
3% kind of, yeah.
So you'd never hit the 10%. So, but you could catch up to the 10% if that's all you were seeing, right? If it's three, then you got a difference, a delta of seven, so that's seven more that comes off the deferred values because of the cap. So you could catch up if you are anywhere less than 10%.
So arguably, maybe these last two years have been catch-up years for property values being way undervalued, and we're trying to step that up, ramp it up these two years. And like, to Gary's point, probably wouldn't be an average for this to continue going at this rate.
Unless it continues to go double-digit kind of increases, yes.
But that is very unusual, and we certainly haven't seen two years back-to-back of double-digit increases.
So we've had this property survey done previously?
Yes, it's done every two years. And, yeah, and they've passed their, all their recent ones. And my understanding is it has to be plus or minus 5%. So if, you know, the state determines it's $100,000 is the actual value, if, you know, as long as we're in the 95 to 105 range, then they would pass their value study. But that was not the case this time.
I'm also curious, I mean, one who does this study, I know it's the Comptroller's Office. It bothers me in that they're setting fair market value, and yet in Texas, which is a non-reporting sales state, which means citizens are not required to report sales data on their homes, how do they access that information?
Yeah, from talking to the chief appraiser, she told me that one of their primary sources of information was that they were able to get actual sales data from significant, a significant number of sales that the appraisal district did not have actual data on. I don't know how that data came about, if they requested it, you know, and it was voluntarily given to the state but not to the appraisal district, I'm not sure. But when I asked the chief appraiser that question, she told me that that was one of the primary differences.
I know they send out their letter, I know they send, every time there's a transfer, they do send out a letter, and it's, they don't emphasize that it's voluntary, you know.
And, yeah, maybe if a letter like that came from the state, I'm not sure, but she did explain to me that that was one of the primary drivers, was them getting actual.
I'm also aware that there's a lawsuit in the state of Texas. I think it's Tarrant County, but I don't hold me on that, that they were using the local multiple listing service to access that information, and they're being sued now. And their argument is that's the only way we have to get market value. So it's a concern of mine that that information is getting out there, and if one thing citizens need to understand, they do not have to report that by Texas law. I'm not saying it's a good thing or a bad thing, but we do not have to, citizens, send that report back into the appraisal district. Understand why they want it, not saying it's a bad thing, but my understanding is that you do not have to report those sales, and I think that's a concern, that they're getting sales data somewhere that I'm not sure is accurate.
Yeah, those are valid points, and, you know, certainly there are generally accepted practices for appraisers and that kind of thing that they all follow. But, yeah, my understanding is there was market value, you know, sales data was the driver.
If they're going to call it fair market value, that comes off sales data, that's the only way you can get fair market value.
Any other questions on homestead cap?
I just have one more question.
Yes.
So the 32 million and the 65 million, that is actual, that's the actual value of the, that's?
No, that's that, like, the bottom line there, like, the 5,000 and the 11,000, that's the portion of the value that can't be taxed.
Deferred values.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Yeah, it is confusing though, for sure. All right, let's see. Okay, so I think that covers this. Let's see, we also, you know, it's also important to note that a lot of our value is frozen, and that's, you know, for homeowners that are over 65. And that really is kind of pulled out and done completely separately, where they have to look at every single property individually and see what the highest year of, you know, taxes is, and make sure it can go up to that but not exceed that. And so anyway, they just pull that out and do everything completely separately on the freeze-adjusted.
I understood, Amy, that on the freeze-adjusted taxable value, that once a citizen, once the tax rate was lowered, that was going to be their new normal, so to speak. It would go back up, if the tax rate went back up, their taxes would not, they're frozen at the lowest rate.
My understanding is that it's frozen at an amount. So if you pay like $1,000 in taxes, it doesn't matter what the rate is, you just can't pay more than $1,000 in taxes. So it's the actual amount that's frozen, not the rate.
That's good to know, okay.
All right, looking at this, this gets to the point we were just talking about, where we've seen two years in a row of significant increases, both on the market value and the taxable value. And between 19 and 20, we're looking at a, you know, over a 10% increase on both market value and taxable value. Looking at the taxable value change, one thing that's important to note is that, so we have a 10.2% increase, but some of our taxable value is new value. So we have a Hobby Lobby that we didn't have a year before. So some of it is new value added to the rolls, and we have to kind of look at that separately, and that's, that's okay that we see an increase there, that's good that we see an increase there. So this graph shows us that it's a 10.2% increase overall, but that dark blue at the top of the 2020 bar shows how much new value we have, 32.6 million. So if we back that out, it's an 8.8% increase on existing value is what we come up with. And that's one thing that's important to note about the resolution. The resolution is talking about freezing taxable values on existing values but not on new value, and also allowing for updates like on exemptions and that kind of thing. We got some very preliminary data on change by category, and I know this isn't, it's not complete and it's going to change, but I did want to at least show you what we have so far. This is only on the market value, I don't have it on the taxable value, but where we saw the largest increase by category on market values was in multifamily units, single-family residences, and commercial real property. And looking at that homestead cap, you know, it looks to me like we're going to see large increases in the single-family residential based on the size of that homestead cap increase. Then the last thing I wanted to show you all, this is a new addition to this presentation, but just some property bill examples. So I know this is a lot of numbers on one slide, but up at the top, we have the average single-family taxable value. So this is just, I have a total taxable value for all single-family units, and I have a number of single-family units, and I'm dividing that to get the average. So it's interesting to note that in 2019, the average was 181,000. That average has now gone up to 202,000. So that's like an 11.6% increase. That would mean that there's new houses in the market, and those houses have increased some of the value as well. But anyway, that's what that's showing. So now the average value is this $202,000 according to this preliminary tax roll. And then down below that, these next categories just kind of show us some examples of what does this actually mean in terms of the property tax bill that you would get? How much is that going to increase? So first, a few things to note. So first of all, our property taxes are not just paid to the city. There's multiple entities that you're paying. So the tax rate is made up primarily of taxes paid to the school district, 52% of taxes go to KISD, 24% to the city of Kerrville, 23% to Kerr County, and 1% to UGRA and Headwaters. So looking at, looking at that, we also see tax rates. My understanding is these valuation notices coming out next week are going to show tax rates on there. It's important to note that these are last year's tax rates. So these entities have not set the tax rate for 2020. They're going to show last year's tax rates. So that's what this is showing, but there's no guarantee at this point that everyone's tax rates are staying the same. So looking at this first example here, the single-family taxable value at that 181,000, if you were an average home price from last year, your total tax bill would go up $409. The portion that's going to the city would go up $98, and that's if the tax rates all stay the same. And that's for the entire year, that's not a monthly amount, that's the entire bill. And then there's a couple of other examples, $100,000 house, your city taxes would go up $54. A $250,000 house, taxes to the city would go up 135. So just to kind of give you an example of some different scenarios, that's what this is intending to do. Any questions on this? All right.
Do we know, if we pass this resolution to freeze all property tax appraisal evaluations within the city and the state to levels set on January 1, 2019, do we know, can we project the impact on the city in terms of loss of revenue?
Um, we, yeah, I mean, we would basically go back to our last year's property tax rates, plus we would have value on new property. And we do have, you know, information on, you know, that 32.6 million in new property. And, let's see.
Because you have the deferred values that are above the 10%.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Yeah, so $176,000 more in property tax compared to last year would be just the new value portion of it. And then there'd be some other adjustments. You know, I know we also have, you know, some different exemptions before, we have some property that's become exempt that wasn't exempt last year and vice versa. So we don't have any of that data yet on the specifics, but even if we got exactly what we got last year, we'd still see an increase because of the new value, because that would still be taxable, so.
Okay, I've got, I'm sure there are other questions for you. I've got one question here for city attorney. At this point, it does not look like the state legislature is going to include the impact of COVID-19 in that disaster category in Section 1135 of the Tax Code, right?
Right, it's not there now, and the attorney general has ruled that it doesn't apply. And so for that to be added, the governor would have to call a special session, and we don't have any indication that he's planning or considering doing that.
Okay. Other questions from Ms. Dozier? Or Ms. Hayes?
I have a couple, and I'm not sure, they may be directed at you, Mark. Is there any conversations or has anyone, have you heard from anyone else taxing entities like the school or the county and what their feelings are? Have they, I don't, I don't know if they've made any public comment about whether they would consider joining in or if they're?
We have not, not in Kerr County. There's other cities that have done this, but I'm not aware of any other entity in Kerr County.
Though, I mean, it would arguably, not arguably, it would affect, it would affect them as well. And then, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do worry or wonder what, if we get this immediate tax relief, which, or property value relief, which I hope that we do, just to be cognizant of what that might look like in future years, as far as how we're seeing those jumps now, if there would be a catch-up after that, that would hurt. Not that that means anything to what we're doing right now, but just something that's on my mind for the future that, if this happens, that we'd have to be aware of.
Gary, do we have other questions?
Well, I was just curious, Mr. Hayes, are you going to explain the process and the timing and all in a minute about if we approve this, the next step, and the possibility of when that would be approved, or the governor would get back to us, or?
Well, the next, if you all adopt this, what we'll do is send this to, of course, the governor's office and our state senator and our state representative. As the city manager discussed, there have been some other entities in Texas that have done this, and so they're aware, I believe, of the issue. TML is aware of the issue, and I think at some point, I wouldn't be surprised if the governor addresses it in some form or fashion, like, yes, I've received this, and these are my thoughts, or, you know, he has the authority to call, you know, legislature in for a special session. And I know this isn't the only issue that he's been asked to do that, to, you know, bring the legislature back, because certainly, if they don't, if they're not brought back when they start next January, they're going to have a lot on their plate with respect to, you know, this pandemic and, you know, relooking at current legislation and laws and then adopting things to, you know, that we've learned. And so anyway, we have no indication that the governor's planning to do that, but I think his office is aware of these issues and of this request.
Mike, I had spoken to both Senator Buckingham and Andrew Mur's office, and they said, give this to them ASAP because they wanted to get it, send it on.
Okay, great.
I've got a question for you. I'm assuming it's for you, maybe for Amy. I'm very happy that we're doing this, I think it's the right thing to do. I would say I'm pessimistic that the state is probably going to step into this at this late date. And if they don't, if we just make that assumption that this goes forward, what are our options when this increase in property value hits us?
Well, so first of all, to Councilmember Clarkson's point about, well, at some point, this will catch up to you, whether you fix it now or fix it later, you'd see an increase at some point. But I don't know if that's true because of what's happened, as many of you know, to the market in terms of home values and property values. So is it really the value that was on, you know, because the appraisals actually took place before January 1, right? Because it took several months to get them done. So it's arguably the value. So it's arguably, the values are not what are reflected on the preliminary roll and eventually, you know, resolved in terms of protests and appeals and so forth. So regardless, I think if the state does not listen to your recommendation via this resolution, you all would always have the option to lower the tax rate. And, and so we've done that, this council, since I've been here has done it twice. And I think this, this council's done it once. And so we could certainly do that again, and would have the impact of, basically, well, we have to balance a budget first, we're in the middle of putting that together. In fact, this week, we're doing the balancing to finally put a budget together. But I'll be listening to all of you and what you think and, and how you want me to proceed. But given what's happened to our local economy, our businesses and our residents, I would, the, the tax rate that I would be recommending would not be an increase for our, our residents. So, not in this environment.
No.
It's just, it just kind of reflects how broken the system is when you figure not only the COVID-19 impact, but the oil price impact. And, you know, while we're not an oil-producing city, we'd be foolish to think that oil doesn't have a great impact upon our retirees and our people moving here. And it's a huge, with that double whammy on us, I, I'm just flabbergasted that this is gonna, they're gonna look at that type of an increase in property values. It is a poor formula.
One of the things that I've asked Amy to talk to Bob Reeves about is putting together another workshop, I think it was last year that we had, I think, Councilmember Eichner, you set it up, where we had the, our delinquent tax attorney come in and do a wonderful presentation about what was happening with values and how the process works and so forth. But given all the moving parts here with, you know, the Senate Bill 2 and the tax cap, and then what's happened with what you mentioned, Mayor, the, you know, the, the exception that we've, we've gotten Attorney General's opinion on, but that's still there, some cities are gonna be challenging that on the cap. This issue with the value study hitting at the same time, and, and then, you know, all of that, how properties are valued and, and the timing of that. I think it'd be helpful to have perhaps another workshop, just with elected officials, to share that information, get ahead of that, so we better understand it. So I've asked her to at least look at that, and then you all can tell us whether you want to do it or not.
Couldn't hurt, it's a lot of information to digest and...
Yeah, and there's a lot of things, I think, that people don't understand about, you know, that it's January 1st and how it impacts the school district and all the different entities involved, that kind of thing.
Your slides are very good, Amy, and they, they explain and show how it all affects everything, and they did a very good job on that.
All right. Do we have a speaker?
No, sir, no one signed up.
No one signed up, okay, all right. Do I hear a motion?
Can I make one other comment, just in reflection? You know, we've caught a lot of grief of having people that are involved in the real estate industry on this council, and I just think this, one of the positive things of having some real estate people on this council at this point in time. One of my first concerns is, and it doesn't really relate directly to property taxes, but I know when somebody gets ready to put their house on the market, one of the first things they do is look at their appraised value on the appraisal district. And if they're looking at 20% increases over the last two years in their appraised values, that's gonna cause property value or property sales to even go higher. And it's gonna make it even more difficult to sell property because people have these unreal expectations of what their property may be worth. So I think there's, there's multiple impacts of this that go beyond just the, the city tax rate.
Okay, all right.
We'll feel it in the community in many other ways, yes.
There are numerous occasions to do this, but of the, I just want to say something about our city staff. Our city manager, Mark McDaniel, when he began work in the city, for cities more than 30 years ago, it was in public finance. And that background and knowledge continues to help us. And Ms. Dozier does a great job as CFO. My Kay is the city attorney, city secretary, Ms. McElhanan, our deputy city manager, EA Hoppe. We got a good staff to work with, and they, they bring us very good information. And it is, it is greatly appreciated.
And I really appreciate the way you balance your, your presentations with, here's the, here's the news, but on the other side, we're gaining, we're applying for this grant, or, you know, we have applied for this grant for our expenses to be reimbursed. So I like the way you balance the, the bad news with the, the silver lining. Our opportunities are out there, so thank you.
Hopefully I'll be able to keep presenting this.
Well, and Amy, I've had a number of people say, they have really appreciated your, with the budget, and of course, that goes to all of the staff, but taking a look at that, looking ahead and being on top of that, so thank you.
Happy to do it.
Okay, do we have a motion in a second?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 10-2020, requesting that the state of Texas take action to suspend the 2020 appraisals of taxable property and use the value established for the previous year.
All right, do I, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a second? Okay, any further discussion or comment? All right, if not, all in favor, let it be known by the raised hands, and it is unanimous. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you all adjourn, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
So this format, think about if we had more people that had attended, would be a little difficult. So your very next meeting is in, in May, your regular meeting, I think it's 12th, is gonna have several public hearings regarding some zoning cases. One of them includes an appeal of a decision by the P&amp;Z. So I would expect you to have quite a few more people. There's not gonna be a lot of people being able to fit in here if we do the social distancing. So one, one thought would be that we go back to the Zoom meeting, and that way more people can participate. Because now your, your agendas are starting to gear up, because we just can't hold on to items any longer, and, and we've got to move some things through the process. You know, I guess you could meet somewhere else, but then there's issues with regard to cleaning of the facilities and, you know, all those kinds of things. So any feedback that you can provide me, this is not an agenda item, so I'm not asking for it now, because there can't really be a discussion. But if you want to individually let me know how you'd like to proceed going forward, or if you have concerns about using this format, if we had 10 people in here, for their safety and for, for the, for yours. So just be thinking about that and let me know how you'd like to proceed.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Mr. McDaniel, then if we maintain the limit requirements and the social distancing requirement, this is what we're looking at?
So really only four more visitors could get in?
We could put more, a few more chairs out in the lobby for overflow, but not many, maybe four upstairs. We could go upstairs, you know, we'd have additional cleaning and sanitizing to do before and after, but we could do that.
I think the primary thing is that citizens who want to speak on an issue have that opportunity. And, and yes, they may, they may do it in writing or, or whatever. But I, I want, I want people to know they can be heard on an issue that's important to them. So how we do that, then, if this works, let's do it, including the lobby and upstairs. If it doesn't, then I think we've got to look at something like municipal auditorium or another setting.
So how many can get in, well, could safely be in the lobby?
About four.
Four, and then in the conference room?
I, we don't know yet, maybe.
Maybe seven or eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if we did the Zoom like we had done before, then basically we could have as many as we would have, have had at a, at a regular meeting.
Right.
Right.
And all they have to, the, the only requirement is that they sign up ahead of time.
It's actually more convenient, because they can call from the convenience of their home, or even in their car, anywhere they are.
Right.
Or they can write in comments, which we don't allow normally. And, and so...
I think that covers more people than...
I, I think it does, too.
The 18 or 15 that I just briefly counted up that could come.
Okay.
I agree with the mayor that it's very important that we allow the citizens to interact.
I do, too.
But I also think it's very important as a council that we show that we're continuing to take this serious, this is not over with, we're not out of the pandemic by any stretch of the imagination. And I think we have to set the example.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll be talking to each of you individually, and we'll work, we'll work through it.
I have, I have one thing, Mayor. I wanted to let everybody know, and you may already know, but very recently, I was approached by a very thoughtful citizen, and I know this citizen has also spoken to, to Mark, and, and I believe to Amy as well, about setting up a fund, which is now set up. And it's also set up at the Community Foundation, and it's called the Kerrville Utility Kindness Fund. The represent administration, through donation only, it's going to be administered directly to the city. And here's, it kind of works like this. It's recognizing that people have had a significant loss of income due to COVID-19, and that the city has made the decision not to turn off anyone's water and sewer at this time. And that the criteria for people that would be supplemented funding for paying their utility bills, because obviously, these are going to continue to accrue, even though the, the payment is not being specifically required in order to keep services at this time. But the criteria would include being a regularly paying customer who has not had shut-offs prior to COVID-19, to being able to prove that you've had a loss of income due to COVID-19, and it significantly affected your ability to pay your utility bills, that you're proactively, already proactively talking with the city. The city has reached out to people who can't pay and have tried to work on a payment plan, an extension, whatever it is, just having the good working relationship, being that kind of citizen that wants and has proven that they want to do the right thing. And then, those funds will go for assistance, kind of in a similar way that when your utility bill goes out, it says you want to contribute, you know, an extra dollar, $2 or something like that. It's the same as going to the Food Relief Fund, it's just getting right there on the website, next to the Food Relief Fund, it's the Kerrville Utility Kindness Fund. And if you have the means, I certainly think it's something that would benefit those in our community who are struggling right now in multiple ways.
Thanks for the explanation, because I, I just had some questions, and I'm going to donate, but I'm glad you brought that up, because now I, and you've answered my questions as far as how it would be supplemented, was one of my questions.
Mark and Amy, if I misstated any of that or needs clarification, please step in and...
All correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
It includes water and sewer, does it include electricity? So does it involve K-Pub?
It does not currently, K-Pub has been approached, but it could possibly in the future, but right now, it's water and sewer.
Yeah, I'm glad you know that, I thought it was...
And garbage.
Garbage, yeah.
Okay.
Your whole, your whole city utility bill.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's a great idea that they're doing that.
Well, and I think K-Pub and the city have done a lot to help folks get through this, this time. All right, it is 10:44, and we are adjourned.